The camera just moves around as the person speaks.
That's so perfect.
Okay, we're live.
Good thanks, Jimmy. Love you all, okay? Great, thanks. Good afternoon and welcome to council Monday, May nine, two thousand and twenty-two. Call me into order at four P M. As always, just remind everybody to silence their mobile devices to be switched off in the sound mode. Any additions or additions to the agenda today? Hearing none, I'll have a motion here that council hereby accepts the agenda for Monday, May nine, two thousand and twenty-two, regular meeting of council is circulatively amended. Counselor Lakes, Counselor Balance, all in favor?
Yeah.
Carrie, thank you. Any declarations of interest today? Hearing none? It's good. A motion here. The council hereby adopts the minutes of the regular meeting of council that were held on Monday, April the twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, is circulatively amended. Move by. Counselor Balance, second by Counselor Lake. Any questions, errors, revisions in those minutes? Hearing none, call question on favor. Carrie, thank you. Up, we have counselors, student counselors, counselor, Ms. Jakes, maybe you want to start us off with the council reports?
Yeah, sure, I can do that. So to start today, social club will be returning to Marathon High School. It will take place from three to four in the library and all students are welcome for that. Running club will also begin this week, will start Tuesday and it should be Wednesday as well. So interested students should keep their ears open for any announcements in the morning over that. Just a good luck to all the students that will be writing the E Q A O and O S S L T this week. And then I just wanted to give a big thanks to the staff and students who helped make our dance so successful. It was a very successful dance, first dance in over two years, so it was good to see all the support and everyone come up for that.
Great, thanks, Council Cabinet.
Uh, yeah, so we are in the middle of transitioning for the grade eight students from all of the feeder schools. So our team's been meeting with all the elementary schools. And on May third, some of the grade elevens and twelves welcomed sixty-seven future students to the school. They gave some tours and in-class demonstrations for the first face-to-face transition day since COVID. Students are going to be returning to provincial standardized testing for the first time in three years with the current grade tens and elevens, as well as the non-graduating grade twelves, preparing to take their literacy tests. They're going to be taken online and in the past week, students have had the opportunity to take practice tests to see the layout of the test. Grade tens will be writing on Tuesday and the grade elevens and non-graduating grade twelves will be writing on Wednesday. Grad design June twenty-fourth about one P M. And Marathon High School will be requesting a representative from the town of Marathon and Mr. Wilson will be in contact for that.
Great. Any questions of our student counselors on that reports? Great, thank you very much for my updates. Up next, we have a report on restricted acts after nomination. Deputy clerk, please.
Thank you, your worship. So the report is called Restricted Acts After Nomination Day, also known as lame duck. This report is provided council with information related to restricted acts after nomination day, which is also known as lame duck. Section two seventy-five of the entire municipal act provides certain restrictions to the council of a municipality in an election year. The basis for determination for restrictions is as follows. After nomination day, which for Marathon is Friday, August nineteenth, but before voting day, which is Monday, October twenty-fourth, the determination shall be based on the nominations of the new council that have been certified. So an example is if three quarters of our council, which is four of you, um, have, I'm sorry, so if four in our case of the members of the outgoing council are reoffering, we are not in a lame duck. After voting day, if three quarters, once again, four of the outgoing council are not elected to the new council, we will be in a lame duck state until the inaugural meeting, which is Tuesday, November fifteenth. If a basis for determination is met, council restrictions would be as follows. The appointment or removal from office of any officer of the municipality. The hiring or dismissal of any employee in the municipality. The disposition of real or personal property. Liability which exceeds fifty thousand dollars. With the above-mentioned exceptions, C and D, they do not apply to the disposition or liability which was included in the budget. Nothing in the act prevents council from delegating authority to any person or body. So the recommendation is your administration recommends that, subject to the basis for determination being met and certain restrictions applying to council in the event of an emergency, meaning a situation where the needed acquisition of goods or services is essential to prevent serious delay, injury, damage, or to restore or maintain required services, council adopts bylaw number two thousand and twenty-four, which delegates emergency purchasing power to the C A O clerk during the two thousand and twenty-two lame duck periods.
Great, thanks for that report. I do have that resolution in front of me. The council hereby accepts the attached report recommendation of restricted acts after nomination day lame duck. And further that the appropriate bylaw be adopted later in this meeting, delegating emergency powers to the C A O clerk during the lame duck period for the municipal election of two thousand and twenty-two. Move by. Counselor Lake, second by Counselor Bushy. Any questions? Counselor Lake?
Uh, yeah, so I understand the kind of reason for this is because if, you know, we weren't reoffering, we could make any crazy decision. We wanted to have no repercussions. Um, but I'm just trying to work my head. So if we are in a lame duck situation and say, uh, pool, but filter breaks and there needs to be a big purchase, it would be C A O makes that without consulting the lame duck council, or is there still kind of that communication would be through the mayor and council and then make the decision where you not even need that's I guess my one question.
Fair, it would be the C A O that makes the decision with respect to an item that's unbudgeted. Okay, would still have the ability to update council on what's taking place as well as the public.
Okay.
Uh, the council doesn't have that decision-making authority that they traditionally would if it was an unbudgeted item.
Okay.
Yes, we're just shifting all the powers to the C A O for that period of time in that window.
Okay.
Counselor Bushy?
Yeah, I see there's exceptions to C and D, which is disposal of property and emergency spending. However, the hiring wasn't listed as an exception for authority. Uh, we have budgeted in our position right now for our chief building inspector, which we're having a hard time, or other staff, which we're having a hard time finding. If the event of during that period, if we were in lame duck, because it's budgeted, would you still be able to, or would the administration still be able to hire that person because it was a budgeted item?
That's correct. If we were in this year's budget, we've been approved by council.
Okay, excellent.
Everybody's good? Call question on favor? Carrie, thank you. Up next, we have some information from Mr. Verbal in regards to the twenty-two tax ratios. Good evening and good afternoon.
Good day, mayor and council. Section three oh eight of the municipal act requires that a single-tier municipality pass a bylaw each year to establish a tax ratio for the tax year. Section three thirteen of the act describes tax reductions for vacant and excess lands in the commercial and industrial tax classes. Tax ratios establish the relatively, the relative tax burden for each property class. Council has the authority to adopt alternative ratios as long as they fall within the provincial ranges of fairness, which is for multi-res, one point zero one to one point one, and all other classes, zero point six to one point one. Since our ratios fall outside the ranges of fairness, we can only move closer towards these ranges. Historically, the province has provided other options in utilizing revenue-neutral transaction, uh, transaction ratios to mitigate tax shifts amongst the classes due to reassessment. But again, due to the province's assessment, assessment referral, revenue-neutral ratios are not permitted in two thousand and twenty-two. Administration is proposing no changes to the tax ratios. So as always, residential class is one, multi-res is one point one, and this will include new multi-res, uh, construction. Commercial is one point two five, industrial is two point two five, and large industrial is at the maximum of two point six three. To illustrate the effects of tax ratios, assume a house and a business are both assessed to be worth a hundred thousand dollars. The tax rate for the residential class is three percent, the homeowner would pay three thousand dollars in municipal property taxes. The business owner would pay three percent times one point two five, which comes out to three point seven five percent, resulting in paying seven hundred and fifty dollars more than a resident. With the overhaul of the property assessment in nineteen ninety-eight, the province recognizes that not all properties classified in the commercial and industrial property classes are being occupied at the same extent, so it codified two sub-classes. Vacant land is property that has no accessible improvement, which means buildings. And excess land is property that hasn't been improved and is, is in excess of the amount of land required to support the improved portions of the land. Administrative finance prescribes tax reduction percentages of thirty percent for commercial and thirty-five percent for industrial properties. Two thousand and seventeen, the province granted flexibility to municipalities to alter the reduction program by altering the discount outside the thirty to thirty-five percent range or even eliminate them. The reduction for vacant commercial properties was eliminated, eliminated as the town has the optional class of parking lots slash vacant. But excess commercial property still receives a thirty percent reduction and vacant and excess industrial properties were given thirty-five percent reduction. Changing the ratios did not generate more tax revenue. All it does is shift the burden amongst the classes. Increasing the tax ratio could expose revenue to a higher risk of tax write-off in the future. So the options are adopt bylaw two thousand and twenty-five or adopt bylaw two thousand and twenty-five with amendments. Administration is recommending that option A is selected, establishing the ratios as detailed in the bylaw.
Thanks for that report. I do have a resolution here that council hereby subsent tax reporting recommendation on two thousand and twenty-two tax ratios. And further that the appropriate bylaw be adopted later in this meeting, adopting the two thousand and twenty-two tax ratios as detailed in the report. Move by. Counselor Suki, second, Counselor Lake, questions? Counselor Lake?
Uh, this is, uh, I'm just trying to think back to when I first got on council. I recall the, the large industrial being much, much higher. We lowered it, lowered it, lowered it, um, which for whatever reason we did. I, I kind of understand that we can only go down. What would the province do if we ever wanted to increase, say, the large industrial or the industrial tax rate in town? Is it just not allowed? Do they find you? Do they?
It's not allowed.
They just would say that's not, we don't accept that?
Correct.
Okay, so, so if you were to ever bring down the large industrial or any of the other ones, you would never be able to bring them back up again?
Unless there is a shift with reassessment, then you can go with the revenue neutral where you're not creating more money. You're just, because of the shift, you're creating a neutral revenue.
Okay, cuz, cuz my concern certainly, I mean, the economy looks much better now than it did. But my fear was that businesses and industries were leaving, the, the burden went more and more on the taxpayers, on residents. So one of the options would be to increase that industrial rate, but that's not possible, but the revenue neutral would be a way to do that if you had to.
Correct.
Okay.
Any else, Counselor Bushy?
Uh, yeah, with the vacant property, uh, we eliminated the ones where there was actually a physical building, but we haven't eliminated excess land. And one of the reasons we didn't for the longest time was James River or Pope Mill owned Boyd and Traxel land, so we gave them the reduction, they just held it. Is there ever a concern if we do experience growth, that the vacant lands that we, they get a reduction on will be held forever and not put into the marketplace? So is it wise for us to look at, not maybe not this term, but in future terms, looking at reducing that, um, reduction so that those lands become available for development and for future use?
There is, uh, the only properties that are in this excess land is the mail site property and town properties. So we've kept it with the industrial, just with the the thought that in the future, we have an extra tool to entice someone to move in there.
Because that's, yeah.
If they have too much land, then they won't be handicapped paying excess taxes as a setup shop.
And just for history, when we wanted to expand the cemetery, as an example, we had to kind of go hat in hand to the mill and say, you know, we wanted that land. So I just wanted to make sure we have that, those tools or we can utilize those tools if we got to that situation where we needed to, and we wouldn't want to annex it, I'll say. Okay, so we have that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? All good, okay, I'll call a question on favor. Carrie, thank you. Up next, we have the report on properties eligible for tax registration, Mr. Verbal.
This is another annual report. According to the tax collection policy, a list of all properties eligible for tax registration must be presented to council. The list is to be all-inclusive. The section three seventy-three of the municipal act enables the treasurer to register a tax arrear certificate against the title of that land if there's two years of tax arrears. The schedules attached detail the properties that have taxes outstanding from two thousand and twenty or earlier. The cost of registering property is approximately two thousand dollars per property. All costs associated with the tax registrations are fully recoverable, but only provided that the property is sold. In two thousand and twenty-one, there were twenty-two properties, including seven marathon pro pulp properties eligible for registration. This totaled a hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight hundred dollars in outstanding taxes if we exclude the marathon pulp properties. This year, there is still twenty-two properties, but, um, exposure has gone up to two hundred and two thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars. Top ten properties are, ten, sorry, ten properties are new to the list. In two thousand and twenty-one, there were twelve properties, first-time residences added. So in two thousand and twenty-one, there were nine properties for tax registration totaling eighty thousand dollars. This year, there are seven properties with exposure of only forty-eight thousand dollars, primarily due to the current club being sold in the tax sale. So administration is presenting this report for council's information only.
Okay, any questions? No resolution there, just for information.
I feel like I have one for everyone. Um, so a few years ago, my big worry was, you know, when the economy was, was down and, and, and we were all worried that people would leave town, leave houses, and we'd be stuck with these buildings. Uh, it feels like we're in the opposite problem now where we actually need buildings. So is there a way? I mean, if, if, if things are getting registered, um, is there a way to support those homes becoming places where taxpayers are going to live? Because there's, there's a housing shortage right now, but I'm not sure if those houses are places that have been vacated and, and taxes aren't being paid.
They're all, they're all inhabited right now.
Okay.
So they have one year for once they're in registration to come whole with their taxes. If not, then anybody has that opportunity to buy the property.
Okay, so that, that, I mean, not looking for additional housing opportunities at that, that cost, but the, the houses wouldn't be left unused?
Uh, the community has no say in the matter. We're, we're just a facilitator. We don't assume any ownership. We get money, pay off taxes. If there's surplus, it gets sent to the province.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, luckily, over the years, we haven't had to take too many homes in our community, and we would not encourage anybody to give up their home for taxes. And we always ask, come speak to our treasurer, make arrangements for payment, and, uh, you know, people go through hardships every once in a while, but don't lose your house, pre-host on jeopardy for, you know, a couple hundred dollars of unpaid taxes with interest, or whatever that amount would be, but it's two years now. The province was, we know we reduced that because it was too many people getting too far behind after the third year going into the fourth year before you can get into registration, so.
But I, I was just thinking, if somebody had left a, a building vacant and, or had just walked away, it'd be nice to see that kind of home put back into the market because we are so short of.
But, but it would be automatically once Mr. Verbal or the treasury department bring the report to council, we would then put the property up for registration. Registration would be open to the public for bidding, and we would be asking for the minimum cost of taxes only plus registration fees. And then sell it off to the appropriate bidder, successful bidder. So yeah, I don't see any houses being vacant for any long periods of times. Today, then, it could have been a few years ago. You're absolutely right.
Yeah, that's what we were saying.
Okay, thanks for that. Anybody else? Counselor Bushy?
Uh, yeah, with our new, um, garage building, uh, city needing that footprint and with the transition between new construction and utilizing our old building and that kind of transition, I see the driving range is listed in there. Is there any value for us to take that over so we can utilize it during that transition time? Or because it's so adjacent to our new garage, is it viable that we take that property, um, for that purpose so we can secure growth or expansion or even, uh, a buffer, I'll say?
We did have a consultant look at, at, uh, property. I haven't seen the report yet.
The final report isn't complete yet. The geophysics is complete. We haven't seen the final report.
The problem, the problem with potential brown, brownfields is soon as the province finds out that there is an owner with deep pockets, they will go for remediation. And so, uh, it's happened in other municipalities where they've taken over a gas station and all of a sudden, guess what? You have to clean up the tanks, you have to remove the cement. And so, yes, this is an opportunity. We're investigating if there's the possibility of, uh, acquiring that more land and developing it, but for the works garage right now, we do not need that area.
Yeah.
And just for councils, uh, remembering back when we had a property that had a gas station on it and we had to do the investigations and we were successful and not have to do any remediation to sell them to tax registration. But if we had been, that would have been one of those scenarios that would have cost a lot of money to remediate the property before we could sell it, so. Uh, you know, we're good. I think we're not landlocked right now in that regard for that property, so, uh, we'll just continue.
And that's the frustrating point, the large amount of taxes owing on, uh, the failed tax sale from two thousand and seventeen as we still have forty-three thousand dollars in taxes outstanding. It's a building every year, but I, I recognize that as an offset, an offset that is almost for bad debt.
So as we all know, paper in, paper out, you know, it's one of those, those counting that the council loves to do. Thank you for that.
Pushes here, pushes there.
That update. Next, we have report on council policy review and council meeting nation. Thank you, Mr. Verbal.
The policy for council remuneration, which is number one, numbered number one, was last reviewed in two thousand and nineteen. In deliberations for the two thousand and twenty-two budget, council agreed to provide members of council with the opportunity to enroll in the town's benefit plans. Council members and their eligible dependents would have the coverage on health, dental, and vision benefits. These benefits would be for council members who do not have existing benefits from their current employers or coverage from their spouse's plans. These benefits are not to enhance council member financial position by receiving additional coverage through the term of coordination of benefits with existing plans. Those council members who enroll in the town benefit plans would be expected to honor the intent of this principle. The town would pay a hundred percent of the premium effective June first, two thousand and twenty-two. Police Services Board, uh, requested council to increase the annual remuneration of the members of this board from three hundred dollars to fifteen hundred dollars. Council agreed to this request at the regular meeting of council on April twenty-fifth. The higher rate will be effective May first, two thousand and twenty-two. The cost of providing health benefits will depend on the number of council members who enroll. Currently, the monthly premiums for each members are a hundred and thirty-two dollars for a single and three hundred and forty-two dollars for families, family coverage. Vision claims are capped at two hundred and seventy-five dollars, glasses and one hundred dollars for examinations every two years. Currently, there are two members of the Police Services Board, one being on council. So the options are approved, the change to policy one as presented, or approved the change, or approved changes to policy one with additional or alternative revisions. Council recommends that option A be selected and the policy for council remuneration be approved as presented. And further, that this policy be included in the town policy manual.
Thanks for that report. I do have a resolution in the council. Hereby accepts the attached report recommendation, policy review, council remuneration policies, C zero, one, uh, C O zero 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 one, and then the policy, C O zero 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 one, the council remuneration be approved as presented, further that the copy is supposed to be placed in town's policy guidelines manual. Move by. Counselor Lake, second by Counselor Suki, questions? Counselor Bushy?
Uh, yeah, is it, so with the intent of to exclude counselors from benefiting, I guess, the co-pay or the pay as it's owed with my spouse or my wife as a plan, I can't utilize this to, to, to offset the co-pay portion of, for the coordination of benefit?
Correct.
Do we exclude our regular staff from utilizing the coordination of benefits?
At the January thirtieth meeting for budget, our budget discussion, it was mentioned that this was brought in for council for the purpose of enticing people to join council and not to increase their financial benefits. So that's how it's been written in the policy.
Okay, so.
And it's employees that get that benefit, not, uh, the members of council.
Okay, uh, maybe I misunderstood it then because I thought one of the ideas behind it was so that I want to say we're treated as employees because we're employees who are not, but there wouldn't be that distinction between the two. Uh, I understand, and it's not that it affects me, but it would affect maybe some other counselors or other people who are looking at joining councils that it is an incentive if you had nothing, but that's basically what it is. If you had nothing, myself or my spouse had nothing, this would be an incentive to put your name in for council. Um, and again, it may not affect everybody, but I also don't think it was, at least my intention, that this was how it was going to be. I thought maybe that if, um, Counselor Suki's wife had one, he could opt into the other portion too, because the law of your coverages don't cover a lot of things. I mean, to a hundred percent, so that coordination of benefit would have been an even better enticement, I'll say. So I would recommend that we add so that it, you can still utilize. In my case, I would opt out because I have coverage and my wife has coverage, but some counselors may not, or some prospective counselors may see this as an enticement, I'll say. So I don't know if other counselors agree with me or not. I think it's just something that I maybe misunderstood how we directed or how we presented this, uh, as part of the budget preparation.
Okay, so what, what we had discussion around now, we made it clearly, the, the discussion was, as Mr. Verbal stated, that we would be just adding this as a, as a a coverage for new members to join councils to have that as a plan without having the co-pay additional coverage. So if any one of us have eighty-five percent, then we come to the time we want the other fifteen, that was the intent. The intent was to have basic coverage for a member to join council, to entice people to come to council. So you're asking a basic to rewrite the policy. I don't agree. I don't know, did the members of council, like?
My recollection is what the mayor's saying, that it was just for
Right.
Somebody had no coverage at all, but it would be the benefit for them.
Counselor Balance?
I wasn't at the January thirty-first meeting, so I wasn't a part of that conversation.
Counselor Suki, you weren't. You had, yeah, so, so I think we're clear that, you know, we can, this is a, this is a coverage plan, as Mr. Verbal stated, with a hundred and thirty-two dollars per single, three hundred and forty-two, so if somebody comes with no coverage from, uh, the other side, gets elected in October, they come with no benefits, they will have benefits under the plan for four years.
They have the choice.
They can opt in, yeah.
You can opt in.
It's not automatic.
You would not, you'd be pretty silly not to opt in if you didn't have benefits.
Uh, it, there's a risk also because, uh, a twenty-five-year-old going for council, it may be pretty good that you're getting seven thousand dollars in benefits paid for you. But the thing is, it's only for a term in council, and if somebody has applied for, uh, benefits after the fact, that's a lot of paperwork if you want to apply for it later on, especially if you're getting older and medical conditions start compounding as you age.
This was simply discussed and I asked and I brought it forward to make, uh, the public out there more interested in putting their names forward for municipal governance boards, structures. Because as we know with the social media aspect of the world today, that's not a very favorable place to sit in your communities or on boards that you're not getting constantly attacked. So to attract individuals with some professionalism, come sit in our councils and boards, having a, a benefit plan. If you're not, if you're a self-employed businessperson, for example, you're not, you would cancel maybe your business plan and go into the council business plan for the four years as an additional savings to you. So those are the kind of things you're trying to attract more people, I feel, into your pool of electorate. And if, you know, we're all here again in October, that's great, but it could be ten other people put to me for to run for opposition, so.
So for the women, to opt in to either single or family, say, like myself, I come in single or married, do I, do I have to choose between the two or because I'm married with kids, I automatically get the family?
You'll, you'll be given enrollment, um, papers and you will select whether you want to go as a single or as a family.
Counselor Balance?
I just want to say that I'm okay with how the policy is written right now, and, uh, I think, yeah, it's a great tool for succession and moving forward, so I'm okay moving forward with it.
Good, fair enough. Okay, all that being said, I'll call a question on favor of those changes in policy. Good, Carrie, thank you. Thanks for that, Mr. Verbal.
You're welcome.
Okay, up next, we have report to boards, members and. Okay, up next we have report to boards, members and council. Council Valance, give us an update on your visit to Fort Frances.
All right. So, yeah, we were very excited to be able to attend the Noma Conference, two thousand and twenty-two Noma Conference, um, in person. I think the whole room was very excited to be back. There was a little bit of leeriness where I'd say still a good seventy-five percent of attendees did wear their mask in person and stuff. But regardless, um, the way that the organization or the way that the event was run, you were able to identify yourself with a yellow sticker or a blue sticker, depending if you wanted to be in contact with people or you were okay with touching and stuff. So there were a lot of well-thought-out COVID kind of protocols set out by the organization or the, uh, the committee. But, uh, so it started on Wednesday afternoon and through there we got, um, some opening remarks from a bunch of councillors from the region. And then we also were able to do the annual general meeting that afternoon. It was really good. There was a trade show with a bunch of exhibitors and everything on the mezzanine floor, I guess we'll call it. Um, so again, well-attended, um, the Wednesday, um, a lot of people were there, a lot of people were out. And then for the Thursday, there was a lot of great presentations that were delivered. Um, we had, um, Hydro One did a presentation, Ontario's forestry sector, um, and WMO was there, TBT Engineering. So there was a lot of good presentations that were delivered. And, uh, yeah, there was conversations. It felt like the room was a lot of conversation surrounding electric vehicles. That seemed to be a big topic of conversation for the whole event. And then, um, Empac did a presentation. There was tourism in municipalities. I should have started by saying the event was thriving in a time of change was the event theme. So it was very geared towards kind of the last two and a half years being within the pandemic. And then how municipalities and/or organizations can kind of enter back into the new world post-COVID, when that essentially starts to really roll out. So a lot of really good presentations and, yeah, I guess the biggest takeaway was how excited everyone was to just be back in person and looking forward to the AMO event in Ottawa this summer.
Great. Thanks for that update. I'll give you a quick overview. I think Council Valance did a good overview of the agenda for the conference. I attended my board meeting that morning, uh, Wednesday, the twenty-seventh board that discussed the conference and the in-person, uh, aspect of that. Uh, talked a bit about the constitutional change within Noma. Noma is looking to the strategic plan that's going to all take effect uh, going forward after this AGM, what was presented to the, to the members. The strategic plan is to set out, just no different than the municipality, set out a, a path forward for the next four years. Because we believe that there will be a lot of changes coming forward in the two thousand and twenty-two election because a lot of members have identified already that sit on our board that are not going to be re-offering for a reelection. So that's going to be a big change. I've been through a couple of those changes over my time on Noma. It's, it's frustrating because you're trying to re-gear everybody back up. It takes about a year, year and a half to get everybody up to speed on, uh, on what Noma does and what their mandate is. Uh, updates from the Southern District Municipal League as, as your representative, as the president, I, I give an overview of the league and where we were. What we're up to, uh, it's frustrating because our, our memberships, both in the Canora District Municipal League as well as the Rainy River District Municipal League, very low attendance, but yet constitutionally, everybody still wants to keep these organizations up and running. And I believe this, the voices and the strength is, and I've made it clear again, and I've been arguing this point for many years. We don't need the associations within the districts. We need the Noma and Nova representation, but I didn't get any traction again on that argument. So I'll continue to push forward on that. Uh, just to add a few updates from our, uh, our members in regards to policing costs and conservation land taxes, mining, the nuclear waste management, the railway taxation and NOSSOM, uh, recruiting, uh, and also we talked a bit about some of the things we sunsetted within the organization. Uh, we made it very clear, uh, to the government before the COVID hit that we would, uh, want to have clarity from them as well, wherever the governing body is. Uh, if we're not going to discuss the item that we bring forward or get resolution to the item to get forward and just be honest enough front to say, take it off the agenda and let's move forward. We, we actually got that with, we did get some traction with, with Minister Clark and we did do some of the items and sunset them. So that was kind of good and moving forward with the, uh, Noma mandate because it's a waste of time for all of us to go to, uh, for example, a Nemo conference and, or Roma conference or and talk about items that we've already talked about for three years in a row. If you're not going to resolve it, get them gone, move and take them off the agenda. Then, of course, as Council Valance identified, the opening conference, uh, we had some of the key addresses from the leaders, uh, within specific parties coming forward for the election of two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, Stephen Del Duca from Liberal Party talked about a few things he's looking forward as Andrew Horvath as well as in regards to the NDP's mandate. And, uh, of course, uh, you know, Premier Ford was also there and Mike Turner from the Green Party was also uh, an overview of, of the Green Party's mandate for the two thousand and twenty-two election going forward. Uh, we had a saw Jamie McGarvey as well as Brian Rossborough, that Brian's the executive director for AMO. He, he flew up and Jamie McGarvey, AMO president, uh, flew up to Fort Frances to spend, uh, the three days with us. And that was very nice as well as we did have Colin Best, who is a, is a member of, uh, council in Southern Ontario and the Spurville area. He's going to be running for the presidency of AMO. So he wanted to get an understanding what was like to be in Northern, Northwestern Ontario. So he took, took a ride up on his own dime to come up to Fort Frances, spend three days at the conference to understand what Northern, Northern Ontario issues are. So I was very thankful and Colin cut up and did a little speech. Present, uh, we had a keynote and presentation on truth reconciliation from Stan Wesley. Have you ever seen Stan? He's very, uh, you know, motivating and he gets the crowd into it. And, uh, he spoke well in regards to the impacts and the, the struggles with truth reconciliation, uh, process working with provincial federal governments. Of course, uh, you know, we had, uh, uh, railway taxation, uh, new business transaction, approval of operating as all the typical business of the association be done. And then we had a nice, uh, opening reception and trade show that evening, uh, thanking the, uh, as Council Valance identified, the, uh, the, uh, participants who were, were selling their products and providing services for supplies. They were, they were very excited to also be there for the first time in a while. Uh, NOSSOM, uh, president was, uh, was, uh, there, the, uh, Dr. Burma. She gave a great overview of NOSSOM and the change, as we all know, NOSSOM is now a private medical, it's a standalone medical school, sorry, not private. And the, uh, the process they're working forward to go forward to try to get more docs, uh, involved. And, uh, I, uh, I thought that was great and I think you're going to grow the, uh, the student enrollment and it's going to be beneficial to all, all the communities within Northern Ontario. And then, um, you know, the other, uh, presenters, Ian Dunn talked about the forestry sector and the somewhat relationship with the government of Ontario. And I sat on the boreal cor, forest, uh, sorry, the boreal caribou forest impact. And Ian felt, uh, comfortable with the presentation of the Ontario government, uh, gave back the speech that was for the federal government. At the same time, uh, we were getting a lot of feedback now from the environmental groups. They're not satisfied with the, uh, the results from the Ontario government regulations and discussions we had. They're going to be going over the next couple of years to have consultation with all the municipalities of First Nations, specifically going along the coastal range, which is the coastal range caribou that affects all of us and the impacted forestry mining. So that's very good. And, uh, so that, that was well, well, uh, you know, accepted by the, the group there. Impact did, uh, do a presentation as Mr. Verbal identified, uh, Impact will be due in the reassessment two thousand and twenty-four. So that won't, uh, have any impact on homeowners for the next two years. And then once that comes forward, we ask Impact to do a great, uh, amount of educating because if people are still confused about the process and the system, I think Mr. Verbal very clearly stated. So if we have a hundred thousand dollar assessment in your home and it's three percent of tax ratio, as the mill rate used to call it, we'll just have to adjust the mill rate. So if your home now goes to three hundred thousand dollars, maybe our mill rate's only one percent. So your taxes overall won't increase dramatically, but they will be reflective of what your mill rate is or whatever the ratio is for municipalities compared to assessed values. They are going to work on that plan to educate the municipalities and the public because it's their job. So, uh, yeah, that, that was a good, uh, presentation in regards to that. And then we had, uh, Holly Parsons talked a bit about the, uh, the policy institute, about the homeless and mental health and drug, drug, uh, issue that we all are faced with in Northwest Ontario. So as you know, governments of both federal and provincial now it's big bucks coming into the housing portfolio. But we all know that what the problem with government funding is that it takes forever to get the money from here to the ground. And so by the time the announcement of the billions of dollars, by the time you get to shovel on the ground is two or three years. Governments change, you know, programs and policies change. So that's, that was frustrating. Then we had, uh, a part of time with the prize wheel, which was unique. Now with technology, uh, they had like a roulette type wheel on the thing with everybody's name on there. So they just spun it on the computer. Everybody got to see it. So that was a little bit of fun to break it all up. Excellent, uh, gala evening. We had a, a band, a local band that played really good music. Uh, that lasted until about ten o'clock. So it was really nice. Had the ride home for everybody. And then, of course, right into the business, uh, in Fort Frances on Friday morning. And then we had the, uh, Bear Pit and, uh, there was a few other speakers. I mean, Council Valance identified that. But the Bear Pit, I, 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 I asked a couple of key questions in regards to the caribou as well as the mining, uh, in regards to generation mining within our backyard and, uh, and Minister, uh, uh, Rickford said that his discussion with Minister Pessini, who's Minister of Environment, obviously we're going to election, June second will be election. Uh, but he said clear to, to me and the audience that I shouldn't lose any sleep over the fact that the government's fully aware of the importance of the environmental assessment hitting the minister's desk. That once the, 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 the report from the panel, once approved from the panel's point of view, hits the desk, it'll be prioritized quickly because they're all about the critical minerals. And he also mentioned that he's had discussion with Mr. Gibo on, on this. Mr. Gibo is the federal minister of environment, that, uh, they're fully aware of the importance of the critical minerals within our backyard. So that was very good. And I think that we got a lot of traction on that. And, uh, you know, so very pleased with that. But overall, as, as Council Valance said, it was very nice to get back in person. Lot of, lot of, uh, interacting again with your fellow councillors and administrators throughout the, the three days. And that's the key point because we make a lot of connections, learn a lot of things, not just from the presenters and the floor, but that interaction is anybody knows going to these types of public sessions. Council Valance?
Yeah, one thing I just wanted to bring up too, we had a great prize, uh, presentation called Opportunities for Rural Ontario in a Post-COVID World from the mayor of, I want to say Westport, uh, Robin Jones. And what was good about that is that she really highlighted kind of from a rural Ontario perspective, what the challenges are that communities are facing. And it shows that, I guess, Marathon's not really a big outlier. Accommodations, housing, succession planning was a big thing too, that the majority of rural communities have to really consider right now. Filling those positions that, um, communities are struggling to attract right now. So, um, it just showed that everyone kind of is all in this together and we're all kind of facing the similar challenges, so.
Yeah, Rob is also the president of Roma and Roma's a lot different. It's the same type of organization as Noma, as you know, but it, it has a lot more members and a lot more money. They generate some three hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars annually with their Roma conference in Toronto. Uh, we generate typically about thirty to fifty thousand dollars with our Noma conference. So you see quite the difference, both representing rural Ontario, but just the difference in the population size. Council Lake?
Yeah, you know, I, I, I just, uh, thinking about what Council Valance said about that difficulty in attracting professionals. Uh, one of the things that it strikes me, we used to do is go in, I remember, uh, the mayor and CEO would go in and talk to the high school students, uh, about civics, but also maybe with some of those business opportunities. Uh, one of the things that we're looking for regionally, and I wonder if that's a role for the student council to do to, to maybe go into those careers classes in the grade tens and say, look, you know, looking down the pipe, if you want to be a building inspector, you can work.
Yeah, that's.
Because, because I don't think we sell municipal government as a, uh, a viable path for, for our students.
Yeah, that was a big push on the Liberal Government where it went to grade ten civics class and talked to them about government, government week and government understanding, right? And, and, you know, that's a good opportunity maybe for, for either us or working through our student councils to bring back not just governance and the government.
The work of.
The, the work of the municipality and what's available, but also what's available, like, why aren't grade ten and eleven students looking at the mining sector?
Yeah.
You know, why aren't they looking in the forestry sector? Like, I don't know. What's, what's the view right now? Is everybody going to be an academic? Or is it people going in to be trades and, and, you know, skills and that are needed greatly?
Just happy if they show up. I mean, I, I mean, we're coming with a pandemic right now. We're, we're seeing kids who have not been in school in two years.
Wow.
Uh, who haven't been in the community in two years, right? So it's probably a decent time, uh, thinking about next year to actually get in and say, look, here's a pathway that, you know, keeps you at home or keeps you in the region you love, pays well, challenging, you're never doing the same thing.
Maybe there's an opportunity once that's all environmental assessments done, is having a child of a generation and seeing one of their key people come up and do a little assembly at the school, talk about the opportunities, like Marathon PGM did two thousand twelve. Oh, the opportunities in the mining sector, at least, and maybe we can throw in the governance model and municipality.
There's probably potential too for a new to maybe partner somewhere.
Global Government Week is traditionally around October, it's the twenty-third, twenty-fourth, which will be the.
Election this year.
The election time, but maybe we can look at, uh, once the new council is elected. Uh, and the EA process may be wrapped by then, so.
Good.
Probably before the, the winter really kicks in.
Okay, so we can keep note of that. Maybe we'll look at that fall after the election. Thanks. Good. Next, got a couple bylaws. Bylaw number two thousand and twenty-four being a bylaw to delegate authority to the CO clerk for their emergency purchase during the twenty-two waiting council period. We read it first, second and third time, finally passes by the day of May, two thousand and twenty-two. Move by. Council Bushi, second by Council Lake. Any questions?
You have the vote.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Carrie, thank you very much. Uh, next we have bylaw number, uh, two thousand and twenty-five being a bylaw to, uh, set tax ratios, confirm property classes and to set tax rate reductions for the prescribed property subclasses for the town of Marathon for the two thousand and twenty-two taxation year. We read it first, second and third time, finally passes ninth day of May, two thousand and twenty-two. Move by. Council Lake, second by Council Valance. Any questions on that bylaw? Gary, you got? All the question, all in favor?
Yeah.
Carrie, thank you. Yeah, next we have a few requests from the new business, uh, uh, under the resolutions of the council hereby supports the test resolution received by Mississippi Mills on pertaining to the Ontario must build right the first time. After the copy, the motion be forwarded to the individual list on, on the originating resolution. Move by. Council DeBouchy, second by Council Valance. Questions? Anybody? Council Lake?
So just for clarification, that, that, they want the new Ontario building code to be more uh, energy efficient than the, the proposed Canadian National Model Building Code. Is that, that's what I mean? This is to make it a greener code than the Canadian code? Didn't quite understand the difference between the, uh, National Model Building Code and the, uh, Ontario Building Code.
Yeah, so what, what they're asking for is for, so there's the national, it's, it's interesting because the, the National Building Code isn't necessarily applicable to municipalities. Um, it's applicable to building products. Uh, whereas what they're saying is under the Ontario Building Code, there should be a higher standard. Uh, so let's say, for example, and I'm just, I'm just using this purely as a comparative. Uh, in, in the National Building Code, it calls for R twelve insulation in a new build. What they're saying is Ontario should adopt R fourteen. Uh, which I, 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 it's, it's, you know, my read of this administratively is it would be very tricky because you start to look at enforcement. Right? From a, you know, a chief building official or building inspector perspective on, you know, how does one code trump the, the other code and, and what do you, you know, what do you get into from that perspective? So I, I, I don't know if, uh, the, the mayor has discussed this at the AMO table. To me, that it makes more sense that it's dealt with at a provincial level, not at an ethical level.
Yeah, this should be a back as for discussion under the AMO table and to, as you, as I see, I would just indicated, make it more simplified, just want to keep to, to keep the Ontario Building Code to meet the highest minimum standards of the energy efficiency within, you know, the building codes. So if you're building a home, you must meet R twenty or whatever the minimum standard is today. They want to increase that to get that value higher. That, that makes sense, but you're right. It's confusing too many people together again. So why don't we table that and bring that, uh, for discussion? We can pass it on to, uh, to Noma. And Noma will discuss it at their next board meeting. That's why I've just recommended passing it on to Noma.
I like that.
Okay. Get to move a second. Permission to pass on to Noma.
Okay, the second, oh, sorry.
Council DeBouchy?
No, it's just that the second one also deals with the same basic principles. So should we table both, which is the Waterloo Resolution? However, the one sec here, if I read, read it right, that cram mahi is a little different because it has to do with the new housing starts for affordable housing.
That's, that's correct. So the Mississippi Mills Resolution was seeking support of the original resolution.
So we can table those two, so.
There, there were one and the same.
Yeah.
But the item B on the agenda is a, is a separate item.
Yeah, so, and, and I would like to discuss this item. So I didn't want to table them all. I just want to make sure we discuss this item.
Okay, so next we have council supports the attached resolution received from the town of cram he, cram he came to build one on nine home, more home for everyone act for the copy supposed to be forwarded to the standing, which is main resolution. Move by Council DeBouchy, second by Council Valance, Council DeBouchy.
Yeah, I, I support this in a sense that, um, back in the day when the new housing development was starting, we have a section of homes, I believe, along Hamill Drive that was supposedly built to the R three thousand. It was the model energy efficient homes at the time and it was done through, um, which would be, I guess, social services and, and affordable housing. And from that perspective, it's nice to have a million houses in the market. But if these a million houses cost are unaffordable to maintain the heat and water or hydro, it doesn't really help the families that they're, they're geared toward. So I could see putting in seven hundred and fifty thousand homes and make them so as energy efficient as possible that it doesn't add the burden of the daily expense because it's always easy to get capital, I mean, well, but it's easy to get something built. It's that process where you have to maintain it year after year, houses lasting, you know, eighty, hundred years. So I support this one in the fact that they're asking for a. So I support this one in the fact that they're asking for a higher standard on public housing or affordable housing. If if that's the way I'm reading it. Because I think it's important that the operation cost of these buildings, especially when you're passing it on to people who are less fortunate or have restricted access or cash flow, that it's important that they have a possession of a building or their home that they can afford to live in. So they don't have to, you know, again, script, it's a bonus that you can get something, but then if you can't afford to live in it, it it also helps. If I'm reading this wrong, you know, I apologize, but that's what I got out of this one from this portion and or for your affordable housing.
So this is awareness. A A MO has been working on a housing mandate to give to the provincial government. So they've submitted that that to the provincial government right now. So all of these secondary requests from all these other communities are coming in after the fact. Because not every municipality has representation on AMO. So we're through the various boards. So the housing, the housing committee through the subcommittee of AMO, which I sat on, the the we submitted a paper to the provincial government now for the potential impact on housing and housing bills and reductions of restrictions within official plans, all the the different things that are always holding up progress. And, you know, smaller communities like us, we can we can get things done tomorrow. When you're talking outlier communities like this is outside of the bigger centers, the pressure comes on there from the bigger centers. So they 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 want to make sure they get it right. So that's where the problem is, you know. We can, we can do things quickly. They they have more of a struggle. So the plan is to have AMO and the government work on a plan that suits everybody reduce some restrictions so that allows municipalities go quicker.
So if you're suggesting that we just on AMO, I'm I'm in favor of that. However, I think that that the idea behind or the gist that I thought of behind this was that really look at at the affordability of maintaining those houses after you get residents in there. Because they have limited resources to pay. We all know hydro is going up. We all know heating oil or even natural gas in a lot of cases. Or in our case, they would have to rely on propane, natural or propane oil or electrical heat. And and they could be a burden on somebody just who who felt himself lucky enough to get affordable housing. If you can include that in that submission to AMO or make a note of it so that we can bring up that portion too.
Yeah, it's already been submitted. So we've had many discussions. We've had multiple meetings with different players throughout the province. And that paper has been submitted to the government. But now we're in, they're in the same thing. They're under the rift. They're in a lame duck situation. So there's not going to be a whole lot happening until after the election. Depending on what the government looks like, whether it's majority PC, minority PC, liberal or NDP government, we will, we won't know until after June second. The paper's been submitted. So this could just go back to, I would incorporate this to Noma as well as as a discussion. And then myself and Mayor Landry and Mayor Modo can bring it back to the caucus to AMO. This goes on, we'll just table it on to Noma as well. I could talk about that or or session. So with the permission of the mover's segment, yes. Good. Thank you. Okay, discussion required regarding the bylaw to eighteen ninety, Mr. Skurczynski, around waste and recycling.
So I just wanted to update council with respect to a proposal from Phil's Waste Services to offer an opportunity for residential drop off in Marathon. So both myself and Mr. Paris met with the owners today. Because under bylaw eighteen ninety, the municipality does have to approve a residential drop off site. It's in our bylaw. So we wanted to have a discussion with Phil's Waste, just to get a better understanding of what was included in in their proposal. And I and I think we have that now at the administrative level. So really, what's being proposed is is a convenience service to to deal with potential wildlife issues. I, you know, we know we had bear issues last year, and and I do hear that we are starting to see a raccoon population in Marathon, which is a a little bit scary. But to be able to offer those services to residents on a convenience basis to deal with wildlife issues or, you know, if in the summertime, you're you're heading out of town and you're going to miss your your pickup days. So in terms of the details, so they're looking Monday to Friday, eight to four thirty, you would have the ability to to drop off at their site. They would have a camera system in place so to ensure security and and that the bylaw itself is being followed. The bins themselves would be locked at four thirty, so there would be no access to them. They are bear proof. They're charging three dollars per bag. So this is above, obviously, our two dollars and twenty five cents per bag. So, you know, if you know, if you're in town, obviously utilize curbside services. You know, and the the owners of Phil's made it clear that their proposal was not to circumvent the municipality's fee structure or waste transfer station in any way, but to offer another service for residents. And administratively, we agree. So what happens is, you know, obviously, when there's a full bin, they have to go and drop that off at our site as well. At that point, that's where the municipality gets paid. So you would pay your three dollars to Phil's. They would then pay the municipality once we invoice them for the number of bins they drop off. And then finally, the the last item that we discussed was looking at this from a pilot project perspective. So looking at the months of May through September to see how it works. And really looking at it in support of our local residents. You know, we brought up the concerns, you know, of of residents abusing the service, you know, and we were assured that that wasn't the intent and and that wasn't going to happen. And that we would stay in contact and and see how it works. So administratively, just wanted to bring it to council as an update and answer any questions. The administration does have the ability under the bylaw to approve this service. And going with a pilot project, it not being a long term waste disposal project at this point, we don't believe there would be an environmental compliance approval certificate required. Looking at something longer term that's permanent, we would likely have to engage with the M O E. So administration sees this as a as an excellent opportunity to test the proposal. The business owners want to do it as a as a community service and offer this up this year. And we think as municipalities, we should support it. So wanted to present that information to council after our meeting today with the reendos and answer any questions, counsel may have.
Great. Thanks, Counsel DeBuchy. Okay.
Okay, so our landfill or transfer station is open Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday for residential, I'll say, or or all access. Will they have access during the, I guess, commercial times? My concern is if we have a bin out there, bear proof or not, smells attractive. You know that by if you store your garbage in your shed or your garage, bears come by. Will they be emptied regularly or after each day? Or do they think? Because my concern is if they have to wait three days or two days for the dump to open or, sorry, the waste transfer station to open and it sits there, not that it gets ninety degree heat, but it will be an attractive. So is that a concern or is that an address to your discussion?
Yeah, it's it's not, it's a very valid question, certainly one we discussed today. Not a concern. Obviously, we'll we'll manage it as we go forward. You know, and it's really no different than a commercial pickup handle, you know, is handled right now. Whereas generally, that happens on a once a week basis. So if there's a commercial bin, you know, at a local store, that's dumped on a, you know, a weekly basis. This would be no different. That's where I think, you know, calling, you know, looking at it from a pilot perspective, we'll be able to gauge how well it works. And if it creates any issues, you know, obviously, you know, waste and and, you know, vermin and wildlife, you know, is in the bylaw. We talked about that exclusively today as well. You know, we don't want to see a bear population, you know, at their business nor today. So I think we adequately discussed it today and and being in regular contact through the process, we would deal with any of those items that came up.
Great. Thanks, Counsel Valance and Counsel Lake.
Yeah, I just really want to applaud Ashley and Lee from Phil's Waste Services for coming up with such a great idea. Everyone I've talked to, members of the general public have agreed, and they do think it is such a great service. So thank you for that. And just for clarification purposes, bags being dropped off to Phil's Waste do not require a bag tag on it. You just pay them the three dollars and then they bring it to the waste transfer and then that's all dealt with.
That's correct.
Thank you. Counsel Lake.
Yeah, I can I can certainly think of some some times when that would be a real convenient service, that you're leaving the calendar, going to camp, and you just want to dump off the bag. What I like about it is administration's approach. I think, you know, there are some services as a, you know, an operation we just can't offer. We can't give everybody everything they want. So I love the idea of partnering with a business, allowing them to come with an idea, be open to it. And then I think a pilot is a nice way to do it to make sure that it works. I think that's a, you know, a model going forward as as we work, right? If if somebody comes with an idea and you don't just say no, we say, wow, let's see if it works and and work together. So I'm very encouraged that that's the the model that the the community can work with. It's a, hopefully, it's the good news.
Great. Thanks for that, Counsel DeBuchy.
Yeah, just one final point. I I just want to make sure that administration and Phil's Pumpers Services understands that if we leave that garbage unexplored, exposed for long term, that there is going to be a problem. Bears are coming. If we have raccoons coming, we never used to have a, sorry. My daughter's home in Thunder Bay. We never had a problem when I lived there growing up. Raccoons were never there. They are now. We never had rats in Thunder Bay. They are there now. And it's all because of garbage that's around. So just make sure that they understand, at least my concern, it may not be all council, but my concern that we don't want to provide a feeding ground, that's the way to put it. So if they need access to the to the landfill site on a regular basis, I'm open for that. You know, and I'm open for the project or the pilot project, but those are my concerns. And I think, you know, we should really, or administration should keep those in mind when we move forward on this by.
Great. Thanks. Thanks for that. And thanks for working with the the reendos in this regard and Phil's pumping. I I I just would encourage any business in the community that's going to have impact on the municipality's operations to reach out to the municipality, have discussions before people step out to the to the public because it has a it has a rippling effect, as we all know with social media. So you had an effect that the yeah, it was out there. There was no discussion with the municipality. And then, you know, we're we're back tracking on those discussions. So just, you know, clarification for discussions to have that the initial talk. And we could have came to a lot quicker resolution to this, but appreciate that. Counsel DeBuchy makes a valid point, though. Bears will be attracted by potential container being there for two or three, four days full of garbage. So we just want to continue to monitor that with the reendos and make sure that they're fully aware of that. Because regardless of what they bring to landfill site, they're only charged by the ton. So if they have to make, you know, two trips a week because of the smell, maybe they do that, right? They have access to the waste transfer or some of the landfill site with their containers. So they could they could utilize that service as best they can, just so we don't, I know it's a non-residential area, but potentially the the bears could be attracted because of this smell. Counsel Valance.
Just for clarification purposes, too, was there any conversation regarding recycling and everything there? Where will there be any confusion or any concern with people recycling waste? It's strictly waste.
Yeah, it's strictly waste. And the the reendos made it clear, you know, part of the monitoring system they put in place was to wash for that. You know, unfortunately, you know, it's likely people will try and take advantage of a service like this. But recycling is not allowed one hundred percent. It must be curbside or go to the waste transfer station.
Great. Everything's good?
Okay.
Look forward to it and thank you to them. And hopefully the residents got that added service so there'll be no waste on the the roads being attacked by the bears. And one other thing too, I think, just as a final note that I would like to make mention to residents, you have to get up in the morning to put your waste to the curbside. You do not put it out the night before. That will attract bears and it causes problems. So I know sometimes it's hard to get up that seven o'clock AM and put your waste to the curbside, but that's the the issue that we've been fighting over the last several years is that people putting waste to the curbside the night before. Bears will come and and make the mess and and start looking around your backyard for more. Okay, up next, we have a motion that council hereby donate the following amount to Bitigon Ishinabe for the Bitigon Ishinabe annual powwow honoring our seven generation schedule for July eighth, ninth, and tenth, twenty twenty two. Move by. Counsel Valance, segue, Counsel Lake. Comments, questions? Counsel Valance?
Yeah, it's actually kind of ironic that this is being brought up at this meeting. So through the presentation with Stan Wesley at the Noma conference, there was a lot of conversation regarding land acquisitions. Is that the proper land? And essentially, putting your, if you're going to talk the talk, walk the walk. So I would actually would like to see some sort of support for the Bitigon Powwow if that is eligible because that would just show the town of Marathon is supporting. And it just kind of goes kind of full cohesion with what Stan Wesley was saying. And don't just say it, walk it. So.
What did we get last time?
We did donate last two years ago.
Yeah, it wasn't last year because I don't believe they had a physical powwow.
We have a year we have.
Yeah, this 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 was, this is on the council agenda because we received it after the budget approval. So the funds weren't included in the budget. And we've already actually expanded the funds under the community support or fund we have. So the council will have to reoffer this outside of the original budget approval.
Counsel Valance?
In a normal budget year, this would have fallen within the community development fund is what you're saying? And that's where?
That's where we would have, that's where we would have budgeted the proper amounts.
Okay.
And if those amounts were currently in there, then we would utilize that fund, but that we've expended all that money based on the allocations we've or applications we've received to date this year. So that fund is now as a zero balance. So council needs to reapprove or approve a new amount for this request.
So this money is coming directly out of a budget somewhere within the municipality's operating budget or reserve?
That's correct.
I seem to recall it was five hundred or a thousand last time. That's the number that sticks in my head.
Was the bronze was the one, I think we did two years ago. I mean, it's up to council, any suggestions out there?
I don't think if we had a rough idea what it was last or our last donation, I I'm sorry, I don't remember. It's been, you're right, two years. But like I said, I I thought it was a thousand, to tell you the truth.
I would I would tie it to our our scholarships that we give to the high schools. I think that's probably a.
So we give two of those at five hundred dollars base, so then a thousand dollar donation would be acceptable for council? And then we can consider this as a as a line item with their community assistance programs to have that added up. Because this is this is an annual event, obviously, but it's also something that was affected by COVID. So a thousand dollars. With the mover and seconders permission or call question, let me do donate one thousand dollars for the twenty twenty two Bitigon Ishinabe Powwow. Good? Thank you. Okay, so prior to going into the closed meeting of council, I think everybody's been up to speed on the newer the comments being made tonight. All good. We will be going to a closed meeting of council to discuss proposed pending acquisition disposition of land and municipality or local board directly following this public meeting. So thank you very much and have a good night. Call me to adjourn at five oh five PM. Move by Counsel Valance, segue by Counsel Lake. Thank you and have a good night.
Good night.
Good night.